Good evening and welcome to the Selectment's meeting, Monday, February 28, 2022, in the Walkway Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We are broadcast live on local cable channel 18. Public call-in numbers, (508) 539-1449. Streamlined live on Town of Mashpee website, It is 6:30 and we are in open session. And we will start off with a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like to have a moment of silence and pray for peace in this world we live in. Thank you. Thank you. Public comment, Wendy Williams. Oh, it's live.
I'm used to holding it closer, but I can do it this way. As most people in this room at least know, I'm Wendy Williams. I live on Mashpee Neck, Simon's Narrows on Mashpee Neck, and have lived there for well over 30 years. I'm here today to say something very specific to the Selectmen. As the Selectmen, I'm sure have noticed, there is a very long list of citizens' petitions that have been submitted for the May Town Meeting. I suspect that the people who signed those petitions would be more than happy to un-sign them, if you know what I mean, if the Selectmen were to now, for example, discuss them and vote to enact any of them. For example, the petition that asks the Selectmen to begin each meeting with an acknowledgement of land that acknowledges the presence of the Mashpee Wampanoah people is something that I was surprised to find out hadn't been done. It's a courtesy to a large proportion of people who live in Mashpee, and I think it's kind of a no-brainer. Many people do. It was suggested months ago and nobody took any action. So you could do it now, tonight, for example. The five of you could discuss this and say, yeah, let's do it. And if you voted to do it at the beginning of every meeting, then the people who signed that petition would be more than happy to un-sign it and keep it off the Town Meeting warrant. The same would be true with the petition that I'm sponsoring that asks the town to remove the corporate logo, or it's not a corporation, the business logo of the shopping mall in town and replace it with the wonderful town seal that people worked so hard to create. Everyone's proud of that seal. It's gorgeous. It says everything about Mashpee that we need to know. And I have no idea how Buff Chase's shopping mall ended up on the shoulder of our policemen's uniforms. But if you would all discuss this tonight and say, yeah, it's a good idea, as soon as that seal is approved in May, we need to take action, replace that free business advertisement on our policemen's uniforms with the town seal. I think that's a no-brainer. There are a number of other things there. For example, as you all know, ad nauseam by now, I want the town to buy the Traupon complex of properties and save it for the future of the town. There are a number of reasons why we need to do that, ranging from traffic flow around the circle to protection of the natural resources. Habitat, for example, to endangered and threatened species. So if the Selectmen were to discuss this tonight and say, we should take action, we should begin conversations with Buff Chase about that, then I guarantee you, the people who signed that would be more than happy to un-sign it. So all of those petitions that I'm speaking of now are in the hands of the Selectmen. You could get rid of at least five of them tonight if you decided to. Thanks.
And next is Chad Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Chad Smith, 75, Quinnicwistet. I introduced a petition to get us to consider tax relief concepts for the town. I have some favorite ideas. I'm sure you guys have excellent ideas as well. That's why that petition was pretty vague. My favorite idea would be a split tax rate, which allows us to increase taxes to meet our need on non-year-round residents while letting year-round residents be exempt. That's my big idea, and that's why I wanted to bring it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now for town business. Minutes, approval of the following, Monday, February 7, 2022, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Approvements and hearings. Okay, discussion approval of the following applicants, resident nation. Appointment, Community Park Committee, Richard D'Orso. Richard here tonight? Richard, it's very nice that you've come forward to be on the Park Committee.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. D'Orso to the Park Committee, term expiring June 30, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay. Appointment Affordable Housing Committee, Cassie Jackson, tribal representative. Term expires June 30, 2022. Is Cassie in? I told them that they didn't have to come.
I make a motion to appoint Ms. Jackson, the Affordable Housing Committee tribal representative, term to expire June 30, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay. Resignation Inclusion and Judicarriery Committee, Joanne Nadeau, member-at-large, term expired June 30, 2022.
Move that we accept with appreciation.
Yes, she was on.
Second, absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Convene joint meeting with the Capital Improvement Program, 6:35 fiscal year 2023 Capital Improvement Program hearing.
May I read the notes?
Would you?
Yeah. For our Selectmen, in conjunction with the Capital Improvement Program Committee, will hold a hearing on the proposed Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal 2023. Said hearing will take place Monday, February 28, 2022, at 6:35 in the Quay meeting room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Copies of Capital Improvement Plan are available at the offices of Town Manager. Be advised, Mashpee Town Hall is closed to the public due to COVID-19 public health emergency. The public may participate in the following manner: Broadcast live on local cable, channel 18. Call-in comment number (508) 539-1400, extension 8585. Streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website,
Thank you, Andrew.
Just make sure I got a quorum here.
Okay.
I see Mr. Richardson. I see Selectmen going.
And Patty. And Don is here?
Uh, Chuck, okay, yep, we're good.
Okay. Who wants to start?
So the breakdown of the Capital Improvement Program items have been previously articulated, but for the purposes of this meeting, I will go over them once again. DPW has a total of $288,500, including replacing a Ford F-550, placing a John Deere mower, a trailer, and a loader. That total would all come out of capital stabilization. The Fire Department.
I have an amount of $346,400.
Yes, was in our packet.
That was applied in the second meeting.
Oh, I forgot the item that was added at the last meeting, which is now a total of $346,400. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So that was the V plow attachment for $57,900. The Fire Department is a total of $215,000. Purchase of two vehicles at $130,000, replacing compressor and fill station at $85,000. Information Technology is a total of $50,000. That's for Town Hall. Natural Resources, truck replacements, $90,200. And water quality replacements at $90,000 for a total of $180,200 from Natural Resources. Planning and construction, flooring replacement at various buildings, $89,640. The MMHS field improvement is $1,260,950. DNR facility, $369,215. MMHS gymnasium upgrades at $75,000, and the cautionate gym upgrades at $155,000 for a total of, from planning and construction, of $1,949,805. And also, for police, 10 police vehicles and at $156,000, four police vehicles at $56,000 on various lease programs for a total of $212,000. School, kitchen equipment upgrades at $25,000, Chromebook leases at $45,000, interactive board systems in classrooms at $25,000, iPad replacement, $25,400, for a total of $120,400. The total from capital is $3,073,805. From capital stabilization would be a total of $1,385,740. Revenue available for appropriation, or otherwise known as free cash, $1,688,065 for a total of $3,073,805. So I don't know if there are any questions or whether the public has any questions, but that is the breakdown.
The Board have any questions?
I don't.
David?
So I like how DPW, you know, it states what vehicles are being replaced, the year, make, and model. Some of the other vehicles that are being replaced, it doesn't state year, make, and model that they're replacing. It does say, you know, on the Fire Department, replace the 371 utility and 373. It doesn't provide the years for those vehicles. And that's consistent with all the vehicle purchases. And, you know, on the lease, 10 police vehicles and then four police vehicles. I'm not sure what the difference is between the 10 and the four. But, you know, are they replacing existing vehicles? Are they new purchases?
Those are leases.
They're existing or potentially new, depending upon what year it is. In other words, there's generally a three-year lease on the line vehicles. The line vehicles are the primary vehicles, black and whites. And then the non-line vehicles or the detective's vehicles or the administrative vehicles would be rotated every six years. The line vehicles are replaced every three years, based upon the mileage of the line vehicles. By the time the three years is up, it's really an urgent thing to generally replace them. So I don't know all of the years of the cars off the top of my head, but I can certainly provide that information. But I can tell you that this plan has been in effect for some time.
It's actually broken down. 10 police vehicles, year three of three of the lease, and then four vehicles is year two of three.
But we certainly do take a look at the year, the make, and the model, as well as the mileage on all of the vehicles. For police, it's generally replacing the line cars every three years, non-line cars every six years.
So, you know, the police, it does make sense. What's the mileage rack-up on the Fire Department's vehicles? You know, how many hours do they de-equip?
I can get that breakdown for you. The only thing that I would caution you on as far as the emergency vehicles is concerned, there's sometimes a little bit of idling time involved there as well. But I do not know what the specific mileage is, but I can certainly get that for you.
Yeah, a lot of my concerns just around, you know, if you were a business, you know, you're not realizing the capitalization on the vehicle the first three years or, you know, the depreciation's so great that, you know, you don't get that money back ever when you buy a new car.
Well, leasing, these are all, we've been on a lease renewal cycle.
Even on the Fire Department vehicles?
No.
No.
The trucks, I don't think are, these two vehicles are not.
Right, but the police are.
Police.
Yeah, I think I bring this up each year. It's just something that's stuck in my thinking. Thank you.
John?
Under planning and construction, the Mashpee Middle High School gymnasium upgrades, just curious, does that include any type of upgrades to the sound system and?
It's the score, electric scoreboards are original to the building, and it has a sound system. It has some repairs before.
Okay, because I know the sound system was always in need of an upgrade, so. Awesome, thanks.
Andrew?
I have none.
Tom?
Good. This numbers are staggering, but nothing's going down in price. Everything seems to be going up in price. It's the way it seems to be going.
David?
One last question. On the school expenses, the iPad replacements, you know, I know the Cape Cod Commission, they transitions from iPads over to the Microsoft Surface Pros because they're, because of the cost-effective and, you know, the much more user-friendly with the detachable keyboard and such. So they add functionality to, you know, what you can use them, their ease of use for people. You know, for the cost of iPads, typically, you could maybe buy one or two Surface Pros, so I didn't know how committed we were to the iPads.
I don't believe that these are purchased, but it's our youngest learners, our pre-K and K use the iPads.
Okay.
So it's only for them. We're Google.
Okay, do we have any questions from the public?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yes.
Now to make a motion.
Well, what about the joint hearing? So they need to close it too.
Yeah.
Do you want to close yours?
The Board's all set?
We're all set.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn the Capital Improvement Program Committee. Motion by Mr. Richardson. A second by the Finance Director.
All in favor?
All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.
No, we need to close the public hearing.
We did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I thought you did.
I did.
Yes, okay, now we need to vote on this to put it?
Do you need this? No, it's an article on the Town.
Articles, okay. I was just.
Yep.
This was just our public hearing.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, communication and business. New business, discussion and approval of the 2022 Shellfish Regulations. Shellfish Constable Donovan McKelley. Good evening, Donovan.
Good evening, thank you very much. So I'm here for you today to seek your approval for the updated 2022 Shellfish Rules and Regulations. This is a little bit of a bigger change than previously we saw year to year. The regulations were in need of an update to bring it into the same level as our surrounding towns. So some extra language was added in there. It also mirrored some language that is already in the state statute and just made it more easily enforceable here in town. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer anything that you guys might have.
And Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I did have a concern that was brought to my attention today regarding the Aboriginal rights. And I was advised that it would only apply to contaminated waters. I would respectfully request that the Board take no action tonight until I have had an opportunity to speak to Town Council, just so that we're all on the same page.
Sure.
I'm not saying it's a.
Right.
I'm not trying to undercut them.
I understand.
Saying just give me some time to.
We just need to have it written.
Yes.
I understand.
I was also wondering if, you know, would change in, there are several, you know, it's a lengthy amount of changes. If there should be a public hearing on that before we go to Town Meeting, so that, you know, if you anticipate any kind of huge outcry against this, then, you know, at least you'll have something that's been vetted out preliminary.
Well, this is our determination, not a Town Meeting article.
Oh, it's not going to go on.
No, no, this is our regulatory authority to adopt.
So in that case, I would really like to see kind of a public hearing on it to get public.
Why don't we schedule one for next, the meeting on the 7th?
March 7.
March 7, and then we can get some language, corrective language from Town Council to make sure that we're not infringing on Aboriginal rights issue as well.
And that way we can walk through it.
Collective hearing on the whole thing.
So everybody will understand.
That sounds good.
Does that sound good?
Yes, ma'am. Just so the Select Board is aware, we did hold three public hearings at Shellfish Commission meetings, and the Shellfish Commission on January 25 did vote to approve and forward to the Select Board. So there has been public input, but I would agree with you that more public input is probably a good thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing I want to add is, you know, I really would like to see kind of a co-management practice implemented that, you know, the tribe is a body of politic. You know, we do have Aboriginal rights to hunting and fishing. I think, you know, the two groups working together would be great. It may even bring in additional federal monies and such. You know, and I think it'd be a good topic for the intergovernmental meeting topic of conversation
Yes.
to kind of explore that.
Great.
And also a reaffirmation of Aboriginal rights, you know, codified through bylaws and such. Reading over it, you know, it does mention the acknowledgement of tribal IDs as being satisfactory upon approach. But, you know, it would be great to see additional language that reaffirms Aboriginal hunting and fishing rights as well.
Understood. I would be more than happy to work with legal counsel or, you know, whoever the Town Manager sees fit to make sure that it's a well-representative document.
Good, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Just for formality, just make a motion, we hold a public hearing scheduled for. March 7.
March 7.
Whatever time you designate available for, to rehear these regulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
We, I don't know that we've got enough time.
Enough?
Oh, to post it?
Do you want to hold off? Next Monday?
Okay, so we'll do it the following.
I was just thinking, I think we need.
So our next one's what, the 23rd, 1st? So I'll make it March 21st.
Second.
All in favor of March 21st?
Yes, yes.
21st?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donovan. Okay, discussion approval of draft one, May 2, 2020, special and annual Town Meeting warrant articles. Let's all start digging in.
There's a revised package on your desk.
I think everybody knows. Okay, and the name of the Commonwealth?
Are you looking, just for clarity, are you looking for votes or just as a first go-through?
Well, I'll, to go through, and if we're ready to vote on it and we're all in agreement, let's start now. I mean, the more we get out of the way, the better.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll start with article. Well, the sum of money we have to wait for anyway, so. Number two, the vote and appropriate transfer the sum of $1,065.92 from revenue available for appropriation to pay previous fiscal years' compensation and unpaid bills as follows. And I think that's.
I make a motion, we include this article in the special Town Meeting and vote to support it.
And vote to support it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's good, one down. Okay, to see if the Town will vote in pursuit of general law, subsection 47, to establish and adopt the new Town Seal in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen as follows, or take any other action related thereto.
I make a motion, we include this article and support it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. To see if the Town will vote and appropriate and transfer the sum of $1,974,712 from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited in the Capital Stabilization Fund, or take any other action related thereto.
Just like to ask, Rodney, this is in compliance with our policy on funding the capital stabilization? Yes.
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
This just applies to policy?
Yes.
To move money annually into stabilization? I make a motion, we insert and support, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 It's consistent with your policy.
Yes. Okay, to see if the Town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $369,215 from revenue available for appropriation to the Natural Resource Capital Improvement account for the customization of facilities for the Department of Natural Resources, or take any other action related thereto.
I make a motion, we include this and support it.
The planning and construction.
Second.
Yes, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, that's good. And support?
Yep.
Yep.
To see if the Town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $1,260,950 from revenue available for appropriation to the Department of Public Works capital account for the Mashpee Middle High School field improvement, or take any other action related thereto.
Right, this one works in concert with the CPA article that's to follow. So between the two of them, they provide the funding.
Combination of funds.
This provides the funding for the field. The other CPC article that you'll see later in this warrant accounts for the money for the track improvements and stadium improvements, so they're related. So I'd make a motion that we include and support the article for 1.26950 for the high school middle field project and support.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
Thank you. To see if the Town will vote to appropriate To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $57,900 from revenue available for appropriation to the Department of Public Works capital account for the purchase of a compact truck loader contingent upon the award of the Sheard Street and Spaces Grant, or take any other action related thereto.
So, this one, this one, if we get that grant, this costs us what, like five grand? Seven grand?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, they pay fifty?
We have to appropriate the whole amount.
I think the grant is for 50,000, so we'd be covering seven thousand.
This only would cost us the balance.
Wow.
Yeah.
This is the item that was added at the 11th hour under CIP, but for good reasons.
Yes, absolutely.
I make a motion we include and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000 for the revenue available for appropriation to pay for costs associated with preparation and possible implementation of the residential tax exemption for FY 2023 tax year, or take any other action related thereto submitted by the finance director.
I actually believe we already voted to include this months ago.
I was one of the same thing.
Well, I think it was, but I think it had something to do with Debbie's office.
No, this was to get the money so that we could be prepared to do this.
Oh, okay.
So, let's just reaffirm it, but this would, this would put us in a position of being able to do a residential exemption in the FY 23 tax recap in the fall.
Okay.
I'd make a motion we include and support.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. To see if the town will appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 6, to reserve the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation revenue the following amounts: $28,692 for 10% open space/recreation purposes, $28,692 10% historic purposes, and $28,692 for 10% affordable housing purposes.
This article was submitted by the CPC unanimously. We got more money than we anticipated from the state in reimbursement, so we have to put 10% in each of these as required by law, and the balance goes to the general fund of the CPC. I make a motion we include and support.
I'll second that. Yes.
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 Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund 10% affordable housing reserve in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 5, the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of funding the Housing Protection Plan, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
Again, this was recommended eight, nothing by the CPC committee. I'd make a motion we include and support.
Second.
Now, Andy, just a question, where does, so its purposes for funding, what does the 50,000?
It would fund a housing production plan, and the anticipation is that we've applied for DLTA funds, I believe is the source from the county.
From the county.
That would offset our, at least probably half of this. So, this would, this covers what we anticipate the full cost to be, but we don't actually expect us to have to spend this much money. Yeah, so it's for, just to be able to provide a housing production plan, update what we've been working with.
Good. I had a second, no have, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the Community Preservation Fund 10% historic reserve in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 5, the sum of $19,680 for the purpose of funding the HVAC unit for the Mashpee one-room schoolhouse, including necessary costs and expenses there, related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
So, again, this was submitted by CPC by a vote of seven to nothing with one abstention. It would fund installation of a mini-split air conditioning system in the schoolhouse to make the experience while people are in there in the summer a little more comfortable and preserve the building.
Let's talk about that for a second.
Sure.
I don't know, I just, you know, compared to all these other numbers, I know 19,000 doesn't sound like a lot of money, but we're adding an air conditioning unit to the one-room schoolhouse? How often is people going to see the benefits of 19,000-dollar air conditioning? I mean, I, I mean, I'm just taking it from a homeowner. I buy an air conditioner, I throw it in the window. This is a mini-split, I get it, 19...
It's heat also.
Well, part of the reason to not use a window air conditioner was to try and maintain some of the historic integrity of the appearance of the building, not have a window rattler sitting in the oven. But Rich, how many people you tore through that facility in the summer?
Come to the mic.
You want to come up?
Come up.
I'd want, I see.
Because we do need to explain why we're spending people's money.
I just have to say that.
You want a icebox.
This past summer, we had 177 individuals come through the one-room schoolhouse from eight different states and 15 different communities within Massachusetts. Part of the reason is, and I agree with Franklin Cotton's concerns, but we're facing a growing impact of climate change, first of all, here in everywhere, and particularly in Mashpee with the hotter summers, the hotter humidities, the windows do not open. Most of the people that come, we have an older, oftentimes older clientele that wants to visit. The program we try to run is about 45 minutes to an hour, and to have them sit in that, it's really unbearable. Many of you remember Frank Lord, who was the former schoolmaster, long time before I took his place, and he would come out on those hot days just sweating in that schoolmaster costume, and many voiced concerns of his health in such an environment. And now I wear that same costume, and I can attest that how hot it is. When I come home, it is dripping wet when I'm there.
Did I change your mind, John?
Are you sold?
No, I try to, I do bring a small fan to try to get something moved, but the windows are closed, we cannot open them. Part of the other issue is the town has to bring electricity. That's there now, they have to enlarge that, and so some of that is construction and electrical work that we have to get into the schoolhouse itself. As Andrew mentioned, to put an AC sticking out the window would, we think would be an issue. The AC heater would enhance the visit that one would have to the schoolhouse and bring alive and permit the people to become more interested in Mashpee's history and be able to sit through that, part of that history in an enjoyable way without sweltering all the times that they are. The schoolhouse is on the state and national historic register. What we're able to do by putting that splinter in the very back, in the upper part of the schoolhouse, we can actually paint that, spray paint that, a dark brown, so that it actually blends right in and you really don't see it. The addition that was added on in 1916, when the Baptist youth took it over, which is why it was known as the Oakway Chapel, that's a false ceiling that's there, and they're able to run the piping between that false ceiling and the roof itself, so that won't be seen, and then run the piping down along the trim to that far corner so that it really is an area that is less, less seen by the public, so that we can fit it in to meet the historic look. That's certainly our biggest concern. We're just trying to make it so that it's an enjoyable event for people to come in. It's also a heater. We also hope to be able to expand when we can use that as well later into the year, begin maybe more than a couple of times a week to use that. So, we're looking to expand it. I agree, in the beginning, we looked at all types of alternatives. How can you spend money for an AC, but it's more than that. Part of it, as I said, is the, is getting the electrical work, digging the trenches and getting that in there. That's a big part of the expense, and because we have to use labor that meets the requirements of the community rather than a private contractor, that sends the costs up quite a bit as well.
So, Rich, first off, thank you, you sold me? And again, my reference was more about not to install an air, just a regular air conditioner. It's just a point of like the value, you know, $300, you can go out and get an air conditioner. I wouldn't want to see that anyways, but again, you just gave me all the justification that I just didn't have in, in front of me, and it also gave you an opportunity for the rest of the town, hopefully, to understand.
That's right.
And a little bit, a whole lot more about the one-room schoolhouse. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, it's just a historic gem that we have, we want to be able to use it as much as possible.
Absolutely. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
With Mr. Cotton's permission, I'll make a motion to include and support.
Please do. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you, and thank you, Rich. To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation 10% historic reserve in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section, Subsection 5, the sum of $86,000 for the purpose of funding the Mashpee War Monument Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
This was submitted by the CPC by a vote of nine to nothing. It'll provide the final funding that we need to put in the proper kind of granite monument that'll work, and the design we've already approved and spent money on.
And this will finish, Rich, the project, right?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Good, we support. To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the Community Preservation Fund 10% historic reserve in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 5, the sum of $42,438 for the purpose of funding the restoration of Lakewood Cemetery Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
And this comes to the board on a nine-nothing recommendation, a move that we include and approve, or recommend approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, you were busy.
We had a busy year.
10% open space/recreation reserve in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 5, the sum of $18,086 for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Community Garden Expansion Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
Again, by a vote of nine-nothing, committee recommends inclusion of this article, I'll make a motion we include it and recommend it for approval.
This has grown.
This has grown, so there's a waiting list, you know, after years of neglect, you know, the investment that was made three years ago now?
Yes.
I think, two, three years ago, has resulted in a community garden with a waitlist. This addresses some, not all, of that waitlist and provides the balance between the expansion of the garden and future uses of the historic former adequate hotel site.
That's good.
By what percentage is it, like an increase by 50% or?
No, it's a little bit less than that.
Okay.
It's less than that, I think, I forget how many plots are in there right now. They will still leave a little bit of a waiting list, but we, there was concern about encroaching on the other historic aspects and potential uses of that site, how it might end up getting tied into the community park.
A motion to...
To include and approve.
Support?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer for the Community Preservation Fund 10% affordable housing reserve in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 5, the sum of $168,084 for the purpose of funding the Homer Village Roof Replacement Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
Again, this comes to you from an unanimous vote. This will allow for necessary replacement of the roof, which is actually beginning to jeopardize the structural stability and viability of the town's public housing at the Homer Village, and will be used to leverage state funds to complete some of the other building envelope improvements.
And we really need to support this for the residents of our community.
It's, if we don't do this, that we're going to lose housing.
We'll lose it.
So, I make a motion we include and support.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. To see if the town will vote and appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation 10% affordable housing reserve in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 5, the sum of $264,893 for the purpose of funding the Breezy Way Roof Siding and Windows Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
Again, by another unanimous vote, a building envelope project necessary to maintain the tech. Different facilities, but same thing. So, I make a motion we include and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund uncommitted fund balance in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Subsection 5, the sum of $1,709,400 for the purpose of funding the multipurpose track and field stadium renovation project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
This comes to you on an eight-to-one vote in support. It provides for the non-field aspects of the improvement, including the replacement of the track. I would suggest even if the field doesn't go forward, this needs to, because that track has deteriorated beyond its useful life and can't be repaired beyond what's already been done to it. So, I make a motion that we include and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd be remiss in saying the CPC committee worked hard this cycle. We've got several members, Dawn, Chad, Lynn Barbie, and Mary Wagan, all put in a lot of time to prepare these articles for your consideration. Like to thank them for their time.
Well, they're all good articles. Very good work, Andrew. To see if the town will vote to rescind the authority to issue the following unissued balances of authorized bonds or notes pursuant to the votes adopted under the following articles to the extent not previously exercised, or take any other action related thereto. Now, these are from town meeting, Articles 22, October 15, 2018, a balance of $210,953.75, and it was for Plymouth Heights Road Project. May 6, 2019, Article Number 29, balance was $108,030, Leatherleaf Road Project. May 6, 2019, Article Number 18, $599,277, Chapter 90/2020 funds.
Make a motion we include and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote and transfer a sum of money not to exceed from revenue available appropriation to fund groundwater filtration test and to qualify the amount of treated wastewater effluent that may safely and responsibly be discharged in the town's wastewater treatment facility, or take any other action related thereto.
This is not ready to be voted on, awaiting a price.
For the price, okay.
But the purpose behind this is to do some additional testing of the infiltration beds at the transfer station site. The existing permit allows us to put the water that's in phase one to the ground, but it was done very conservatively, and there's good potential that if we redo the test under state guidelines, we'll be able to put substantially more water treated effluent for future phases of this project at that location. But it's not ready yet, this will hold off, maybe on the 7th.
We have one hold, that's good. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of money not to exceed blank blank from revenue available appropriation for the preparation of design, okay, we're going to hold this one.
This one's hold, this is phase two, you'll have a draft price on the 7th. Bids close on noon on the 7th.
Okay, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $450,000, formerly $376,000, from revenue available for appropriation to fund Santuit Pond Reus Leap Project, stormwater improvements, nutrient and activation, or take any other action related thereto. This is submitted by the Department of Resources.
So, what this does is, does two things. It allows for matching funds that would leverage state funds under the municipal vulnerability program to conduct some stormwater improvements, to pull direct road runoff out of Santuit Pond to improve quality. And the second thing that it would do would do a study and fund the application of alum sulfate, which would bind a lot of the phosphorus that's in the pond, with the intent of breaking the cycle of toxic algae blooms in Santuit Pond. This appears to be the last remaining intervention that we can do to improve water quality in the short term while the sewer project is underway. So, what this is intended to do, it lasts about 10 years. We did it, or it was done in a Schumit Pond as part of the base cleanup for the phosphorus plume from the treatment plant, lasted about 10 years. It'll buy the time.
It's a buying time.
It's buying time, it'll prevent, hopefully prevent the system from complete collapse.
So, the treatment would happen like this year?
Probably not this year, probably next year, because you gotta, you have to, alum sulfate can be toxic, so you have to figure out, yeah, you have to do a little bit of in-pond work, study to get the permits to do it. Part of the reason it's on the specials opposed to the annual is so that the work can commence in May, so. So, maybe, but it's probably not gonna get treated in time to benefit the pond for the summer of twenty-two, but
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
It will be in time for twenty-three, whether it gets applied in twenty-two or not, I don't know.
Any questions?
Make a motion.
Do we know anything about the alum as far as how it affects fish and?
Alum's complicated. There's some people that think it's like the right, absolute, the right answer, and there's people who think it's the worst thing you can do. The truth lies somewhere in the middle. As a part of a strategy that has you interrupting the nutrient flow in the future, it buys you time, and it's a pretty well-used, common treatment for ponds. If you're relying on it as the only answer, in other words, you don't change what you're doing, that it hurts the pond, you eventually will put enough alum in that it becomes toxic. So, as a one-timer, probably fine. As the answer, it's not a good answer. So, the plan here is, as part of phase two of the searing program, sewer around Santuit watershed, stop the main source of phosphorus coming in. This buys you time, by the time this wears off, you've eliminated the inflow of new nutrients, and hopefully you have a pond that can then sort of stand up on its own two feet.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we include and support.
Second.
And all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's tough, it's, feel like you're putting, we're just putting Band-Aids on to get us through, and money goes quick.
Yeah.
Okay. Article one, to see if the town will vote, accept the report.
Make a motion, we include Article one as submitted and support.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roque.
Yes.
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 Article two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officials as provided in chapter forty-one, section one oh eight of the Mass General Laws for the period of July one, two thousand and twenty-two, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and further to see if the town will vote to appropriate, raise, or transfer the sum of money to defray the town's expenses for suing fiscal year according to the following line item budget, with the maximum amount to be appropriated as shown in the column entitled FY two thousand and twenty-three, department requests, see on this budget or take any other action related thereto.
Do we need to do this now, or do you want room to make tweaks, or?
If you could, hold off.
Hold off.
Hold off on that one, so we put a hold on that.
You still have to go to Finance Committee and things, right? Okay.
Article two, now we need three. So we'll.
This one we can do.
This one we can do, Article three. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million three hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars from available funds to various department capital accounts as specified in the chart accompanying this article or take any other action related thereto. And it lists the articles that we just did.
This is the CIP plan. I make a motion, and we include Article three and support it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article four, to see if the town will vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for Cape Cod Regional Tech High School District for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
What?
I'm waiting for you to say something.
I know. I was too.
When is Mr. Sanborn paying us his annual visit?
Further to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million eleven thousand four hundred and forty-six to meet its share of the cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two. I know, I was waiting for the same thing.
Do we have him booked?
We do not, would you like him booked?
I look forward to it annually.
We have to have him in. It's a must.
Can we hold this till we have that discussion?
So you wanna put that one on hold?
Hold it at least.
Yeah.
Okay, hold for.
Hold.
Entertainment purposes.
And entertainment purposes. Okay, Article five, to see if the town will vote and approve the regional school district assessment for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building Project for the fiscal, wanna hold that one?
No, we're stuck with this.
Okay. Beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of six thousand eighty, uh, six million eighty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-five, and further to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars to meet its share of the cost of debt for the school Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building Project for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two, or take any other action related thereto.
Can I ask Dawn a question? Dawn, this is up from last year, right? Is it down? I thought we had more kids, or they have, or is it more, the overall went up, so we went down?
I, the student enrollment did go up, but I believe it's going down.
Okay. I make a vote, go ahead.
I motion that we approve and support.
Do I have a second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. Okay, to see if the town will appropriate and transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation for the other post-employment benefits invocable trust fund or take any other action related thereto.
I make.
This is, want to explain?
Um, no, you can go.
I make a motion, we include and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote to amend Article, what number is that? XV-one.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, thank you. Subsection one seventy-four dash ninety-one of the zoning bylaws, by submitting the term select board for so, Board of Selectmen, and further by deleting the terms Board of Selectmen and Selectmen in every other instance in which they appear in the zoning bylaw and inserting in their face the place, the words Select Board, or take any other action related thereto.
Madam Chair, if I could.
I, okay.
Just as a matter of clarity, because I don't want there to be any confusion. Obviously, this was addressed at the last town meeting.
Yes.
But it was determined through the Attorney General's Office that there was a flaw because it did not go through the planning board. Um, so we're trying to correct that so that we can officially refer to it as the Select Board versus the Board of Selectmen. It was a technical flaw that got biased, and we're correcting it, and that's the purpose of this.
And I think they have it on their upcoming meeting, I think. Yeah, they do.
Yeah, it's on their agenda.
It's on their agenda.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we include and support.
Rover.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and Conservation Commission to convey, we'll have to change all the wording in these articles once it's approved. To see if the town will vote and authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission to convey two thousand nine hundred and forty square feet of land under the care and custody of the Town of Mashpee Conservation Commission, which land is a portion of a parcel identified at Mashpee Assessor's Parcel, thirty dash nineteen dash zero, and referenced in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds at book three four three five, page eighty-six, and to accept the conveyance of two thousand nine hundred and forty square feet of land from Jake's Fesco.
Doc Fresco.
Josh Fresco and Rosalyn Fresco, which land is portion of a lot identified as Three Santuit Lane, Mashpee Assessor's Parcel, thirty dash twenty dash zero, and referenced at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in book two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine, page one seventy-two, and to accept such land into the care and custody of the Mashpee Conservation Commission for the purpose of curing an encroachment upon town-owned land, all as shown on a plan of, plan of land on file at the office of the town clerk, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen and Conservation Commission to file a petition with the general court under the Article ninety-seventh of the Declaration of Rights for the purpose of this article or take any other action related thereto. This article will remedy the encroachment of town-owned land at Three Santuit Lane by a land swap between the owners and the town.
I just wanna make note, Madam Chair, um, so this article, as well as, it's a, it's a land swap?
Mm-hmm.
So the other part of the article is actually on the top of page twenty-five. And again, none of the articles numbered yet, but
Mm-hmm.
I just think for, trying to be transparent, I don't know if we can move that article.
Closer to them.
Right, you know, so that next to each other, because
Sure.
if you read this, then you read the next one, you know, did we just vote on that?
Isn't this a, are they repetitive? Is this duplicative?
Which one are you talking about?
There's two articles, John's right.
He's referring to the one on page twenty-five, I thought.
Yeah, so it's either.
Page twenty-four, new art, new one.
Yeah, it's on the new, because I, I'm still reading off, because I made my notes.
I think it appears twice, John.
Well, that's, so I don't.
Yeah, so I think the one on twenty-four can just go.
It's the same one.
Well, yeah, but it's, sorry.
No.
Same, same books and page and everything.
Is it double, or, or is it the other half of the swap?
No, because it, this allows you to, as Carol read it, it allows you to give and receive.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make that adjustment and, and remove that.
Okay, perfect.
I see what you're saying, the first one just doesn't have the reference to appendix.
Yeah, it just didn't have the reference to the appendix.
So we'll, we'll straighten that out.
Okay.
But it's only gonna be one, because Article ninety-seven takes.
Okay, to see if.
Make a motion, we approve, include and approve.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. To see if the town will vote to authorize the total expenditures for the following revolving funds pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E, half of the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two, to be expended in accordance with the bylaw establishing said revolving funds, therefore approve or take any other action relating thereto. Recreation, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, library, twenty thousand, senior center, fifteen thousand, historical commission, two thousand five hundred. This article established expenditures limits for the Department of Revolving Funds.
These are included in your budget, right, Phil Thomas? I make a motion, we include and support.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited in a special injury leave indemnity fund, injured-on-duty fund, in accordance with the provision of general law, chapter forty-one, section one 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 F, for the purposes of funding injury leave compensation or medical bills incurred under the said law or take any other action related thereto. This article would deposit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a special injury leave indemnity fun, fund.
Make a motion, we include and support.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. To see if the town will vote and appropriate five hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and twelve dollars to establish a budget for the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, with said appropriation to be funded through the current balance of the fund or take any other action related thereto.
I make a motion, we include the Peg Access article and support it.
And support.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the sum of fourteen thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars from the ambulance receipt account to the fire department expense account or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. To see if the town will vote and authorize the creation of four additional positions within the fire department for full-time firefighters, contingent upon the receipt of the federal staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, SAFER, grant, with said positions to be classified under the Mashpee Permanent Firefighters Association Local two-five-one-nine effective July one, two thousand and twenty-two, and further to authorize the town manager and/or select board to file any applications or take whatever other action may be necessary to secure the federal SAFER grant funds or take any other action related thereto. Now, this is the, for how many years does the grant give us?
Three years, as I recall, and it is not contingent upon maintaining these positions beyond that. Uh, so through, um, attrition, technically, they could be eliminated at that particular time, which I think Bourne did, but obviously, that's three years away.
And then in three years.
Again, the positions are only contingent upon acceptance of the, of the grant. If we don't get the grant, we're not going to create the position.
Okay.
And it does cover everything, all costs.
So for all intents and purposes, they're temps.
Yes.
They would be temp, for three years.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no guarantee of employment after three years.
Absent, if you have attrition.
Right.
And you choose not to refill positions, if you don't have people leave, then you'd be in a position of having to lay firefighters off or continue the funding.
That is correct.
So, yes.
And no.
Yes and no.
Well, if, if they were, I mean.
You are correct.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that's a reason not to do it, but just know what you're
Right.
Know what you're committing yourself to, which is.
I wanna be clear on that.
Yeah, which is a commitment to four new positions that when the grant goes away, absent people leaving on their own, you're gonna be assuming these as municipal budget expenses going forward.
Or laying off.
Or laying off.
Or laying off.
So do we, do we have a dollar amount on what these four positions look like?
Um.
I don't think we do.
We have a preliminary. Yeah, we have a preliminary figure.
To fulfill the need?
I'm sorry?
Does, is it, is it at the discretion of the department to fill gaps in staffing needs? Or is it specific language in the grant that states what types of positions there?
No, it's just for the, the firefighter, paramedic, EMT possessions. So it, so it would be added to the regular floor firefighters.
Right.
If that's your question.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not an administrative.
Putting a dollar amount would just put it in perspective as to, you know, if we don't back out after three years, then what that, what are we looking at?
Can I make a suggestion? Um, uh, put it on hold and let me get
Thank you.
the precise figures, including the benefits.
Okay.
I mean, I will say, I was I was kinda skeptical of this, I was persuaded by, as often is the case, with anecdotal situation where I was involved in a situation that required for someone else a call, and the two people that showed up on a winter day, because everybody else is booked, were the chief and the deputy chief as the responders, because there was no one on call available, because they're already booked up in December. So it's hard not to look at that situation and think that during the summer call period that we're, they were asking them to do more with not enough.
I know.
I, I can tell you the calls are significantly up.
Oh, they are, no question.
So.
I think you listened to.
But I think we need to go into it with our eyes open, that we're making a commitment. Realistically, we're making a long-term funding commitment for the, to maintain these positions.
That's right. And in three years, we could be in a better position to do that.
Or it may just be a priority that we choose to fund at the expense of something else, but
I agree.
It's not, I don't think, it's not temporary.
But there's nights when, if they're all going, all different ways.
But, yeah, let me get the exact figures, including the wages and the benefit package, get the total for you. Um, and then, if you can, just put it on hold until the next meeting.
Agreed. Okay.
Is it time-sensitive on the application of the grant?
The application is, was much first, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. We, we did submit because of the deadline, however
We don't have to.
we don't have to do anything without authority.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, to see if the town will vote and raise, borrow, transfer from available funds and appropriate the sum of, to provide, provide for road implement projects under chapter ninety program or take any other action related thereto. 90 program or take any other action related thereto. We'll have to hold that, because we don't have a dollar amount. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $446,205 for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2023, said sum to be raised from $446,205 in receipts of the enterprise fund or take any other action.
Make a motion to include and support.
That's just a revolving.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer from FY 2023, Community Preservation Estimated Revenue, the sum of $40,000 to the Community Preservation Administrator and Operating Expense Account pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter 44B, subsection 5, including any necessary costs related thereto.
This comes to you with a 7-0 vote from the committee. It pays for the administrative secretary as well as any expenses we might incur, appraisals and the like, the annual event. Make a motion to include and support.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, to see if the town will vote to continue participating in the Community Septic Management Program of the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, MWPAT, for the purpose of making loans to the residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to the agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all cost and, and related therefore, or take any other rela- action related thereto.
Two things. One, I'd like to make a motion to include it, but I'd like to amend it to read the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, they stopped being called the Water Pollution Abatement Trust a few years ago.
Can you give me that again?
Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. And then to let people know that this gets administered by the county on our behalf, the county commissioner has approved a proposal to reduce the interest rate for these loans to a sliding scale, so that people who are up to 120% of area median income will get a 0% loan, people 120 to 180% will qualify for 2%, and people above 180% would qualify for a 4%. That request is going to be going to Clean Water Trust for approval soon, but, but it'll improve the loan conditions contemplated in this article.
Okay.
I make a motion to include and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we're skipping that one. Okay, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws as follows. The deposit, chapter, bylaw, chapter 147, article 3, subsection 147-6, deposit of snow on townways and property violations and enforcement. No person other than an employee in the service of the town, or an employee in the service of an independent contractor acting for the town shall pile, push, plow, or otherwise deposit snow or ice onto a townway, private way, open to the public, used designated by the select board for purposes of general law, section 40, subsection 6C, bikeways, parks, parking areas, or other town-owned property, so as to impile the flow of vehicular or pedestrian traffic on such ways or interfere with the public use of such property. Whoever violates this section shall be punished by a fine of $200 for each offense. The provision of this chap- chapter shall be enforced by the Mashpee Police Department, the Director of Public Works, and/or her designee. The provisions of Mass General Law, section 40, subsection 21D, providing for noncriminal disposition of violation shall be acceptable, and the person taking coincidence of any violation therefore make issue to offender a written notice as provided in the said subsection 21D as an alternative to district court criminal proceedings or available enforcement resident remedies, or take any other action related there. This article would amend the town's general bylaws to prevent contractors from plowing snow from private property onto town roads, particularly from commercial parking lots.
Very good, Madam Chair. The board already has a policy consistent with this language, but the policy is not enforceable.
Enforceable.
So this would make your own policy that has been previously adopted by a prior board to be enforceable with a civil penalty.
Make a motion to include and support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the sum of $195,000 from the waterways improvement fund to the engineer permitting and dredging associated expense account or take any other action related thereto.
Make a motion to include and approve.
Include and support. I second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, to see if the town will authorize and power the board's blocking to care plan laying out and defining Christopher Lane and to accomplish said purpose and the expenses related thereto, the town vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation $5,000 to the Christopher Lane roadways account or take any other action related thereto.
Make a motion to support.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, we just, these are petition articles, so we just support.
Just support.
Yeah. You gave a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, this is also a petition article. The article authorizes the town to complete the private pro- public road conversion process for Oldham Circle.
Make a motion to support.
Next.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Petition article. Recent building booms in town have created confusion in municipalities as to the location of the town center. At least one recent map enormously named a privately-owned shopping center as the town center. This was created uncertainly for many residents and visitors. The affirmation clarifies the situation.
I'll make a motion to support it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, to see if the town will vote and instruct the Mashpee Select Board to replace no later than three months from the date of this vote, the current shoulder patch worn on the Mashpee police uniforms with a newly adopted seal.
I don't have a problem with it, but I, I don't see the, I don't understand the reason for the timeframe. If we're going to adopt a seal, which I'm sure the seal is going to.
Once the seal is adopted.
I just don't want to put undue pressure on, it's got to be, they got to be, have a time limit to change all the uniforms. I'm not saying it can't be done.
Do it twice.
Ninety days, but.
It was my understanding, because I inquired about, you know, because the police department's logo used to have a, a profile of a Native American, and I guess, you know, it's up, is that the discretion of the captain, or chief, rather, to change the logo? And so, you know, he, he made that decision to, he liked the clock tower and put the clock tower. I'm not sure if it goes before any kind of formal approval by any committee board or meeting, town meeting or anything. So I think, you know, it, it's fair to ask that, you know, they reconsidered the patch and to address the town response.
Maybe we could ask the former chief what the chief's authority is.
Well, I know it was subsequently changed after I became manager, but I don't think there's any issue with putting the new town seal, which, may I add, looks really, really nice.
I'd assumed we would put the new town seal on everything.
On everything.
That's what I thought was happening, so.
Yeah, I really.
The, the only thing is, I, I just want to caution the board that I would prefer there not to be any specific timeline, only because as new uniforms are worn and, and are on the verge of being replaced, rather than replacing something that might not be completely worn out, do we want to change it? If the answer is yes, then we'll change it. The only thing is, there is a cost to that, because those patches are not cheap.
Carol, could I ask that, we asked the manager just to give us an opportunity to look at what the, to just develop a plan to convert things over to the new town seal, only assumption of, and then we can schedule that, take a vote. We can't take a vote on something that's not on the agenda tonight.
Right, right.
But take a vote on, you know, telling people in advance what we're going to do with the town seal, and then.
Exactly.
The petitioners can decide what they want to do.
And, and there's a lot that's going to have to be changed.
Mm-hmm.
Right here.
Everything.
Everything.
Which logo is on the, on the Cruises?
I think that's the town seal.
Town seal.
So.
There's a lot of changing to do.
Can we just ask you to come back with a conversion plan?
That would be good.
And a timeframe associated with it, and I think the board would adopt it.
Okay.
Since that's my petition, I can speak to the question that was asked about the time limit. Would you like me to do that?
Well, you've already, you've already put in your petition.
Right, so one person asked why the three-month time limit. I can answer that question, or I can just let it go.
Okay.
So to you, Carol.
You can answer it.
Okay, the reason it was, the time limit was put in there was because we wanted to make sure that it didn't take an inordinately long time. Our experience has been in the past that when people have suggested that things get done, people say they will get done, and then it goes on and on and on for months and a year, or something like that. There's a similar case that's not in a petition right now that we're waiting to get fixed. So I don't think we particularly need it to be done in three months immediately. What we need is an assurance that it will done.
Well, I think once, once the town seal is adopted at town meeting, I think you'll see it progress.
Well, that's, we're not willing to wait for that. We want an assurance.
Well, we have to wait for town meeting to approve the town seal.
No, we don't have to.
Well, we are. It's in, it's one of our articles.
Well, if that's what you want to do, you can do that, but the reason that's there is that we want to assure that action is taken and that this is not allowed to drift the way that other things have been allowed to drift. So if you all have a discussion and say we will begin action immediately.
No, we're going to have the town manager.
If we have a discussion and you all say we will begin action immediately upon adoption of the town seal to take that patch off the policeman's shoulder and put the correct new seal on the policeman's shoulder, then that would be enough, and we will be glad to withdraw the petition if we hear that conversation.
Well, this conversation was started tonight, with, since that action is not on our agenda, we can't lawfully take that up tonight, where we asked.
Well, you don't have to do it tonight, you can do it.
Well, thank you for giving me more time.
Okay, all right.
So, Madam Chair, very good. I suggest that I bring back to the board a comprehensive plan with specific suggestions on timelines relative to the changeover.
Sure.
Of all items referred to, something that's objectionable.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
May I ask, did you hold this, or did you?
Yes.
Well, we don't.
A petition.
It's on.
It's a petition.
Well, I know, but.
It's, it's on, but.
You didn't vote.
You didn't vote to support it.
Right, you didn't vote.
Are you doing?
Until we get the information from. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to acquire, purchase, gift, or eminent domain, or otherwise for conservation, open space, passive recreation purposes to the general public, consistent with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter 40, subsection 8C, and Article 97 of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Mass, the parcels of land totaling 32 acres, more or less identified on 2021 Mashpee Successus map or map, 68 blocks, five and six, map 75, block one, the portion of map 74, block 16, lying east of a line running from the point of south side of the layout of State Route 28, lying directly opposite of southernmost corner of map 67, block nine, to the northernmost corner of map 74, block 17. That portion of map 75, block 10, lying southwest of maps, map 68, block five, and map 75, block one, and the remainder of Trout Pond by completing the following steps. Okay, because this is a petition article, I don't have to read all of it we've read.
No.
Okay, so, take any other action or related thereto. This authorize the selectmen to acquire, buy, purchase, gift, or eminent domain, or otherwise for conservation, open space, recreation, the Trout Pond area, a town treasure, pre-contact development here will help and benefit the Mashpee River. I know, Andy?
Well, I just have some questions about, from council, whether it's drawn properly. There are things that require us to spend money now upon passage for which there aren't appropriations, so curious what the town manager's plan would be for updating the open space conservation recreation plan, and how we would fund the necessary appraisals to be able to meet the requirements of the timeline in here. So before taking a position on it, I'd want to know how, how would we implement this that we're being asked to do where it passed.
Is that okay with everybody?
That's a hold.
It's a hold. It's a hold until we get.
A hold and follow-up.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yep. Okay, to see if the town will vote to instruct the town select board to begin each meeting with acknowledgement of land which affirms that the present town of Mashpee is established upon land long occupied by Mashpee Wapoanaw people for at least the past 10,000 years, submitted by a petition.
Carol?
Yeah?
Conceptually, I don't have an issue with this. I have a question, though.
Okay.
And my question would be, and it's born out of a conversation I had with the prior tribal chair, who indicated to me that he had questions about the validity of the intergovernmental agreement between the town and the tribe.
Okay.
And what I'd like to ask is when we do meet with the tribal council, that an agenda item be placed to discuss current leadership's position on the IGA. And my reason for asking that is, while I have no problem doing what's asked in the petition, I'd want to know that there was not the potential that doing so could potentially be used as an exhibit in a legal challenge to the validity of the IGA. If the IGA is honored, no problem, but I'd like to have that conversation, at least have, be able to have that conversation with leadership when we meet, as they've suggested that we meet.
Do we have a date yet, Wayne?
No, but we have communicated.
Okay, good.
And they indicated that they would get back to us.
Okay, good.
I mean, we have to execute this warrant on the 21st of March, so it'd be nice if we asked if we could hold that meeting prior to that date.
Oh, that would be good.
My position on this type of thing is, you know, with my day job at the tribe as a historic preservation officer, I'm getting inundated with calls from, I mean, they're doing these statements all over the Commonwealth, all over the Cape particularly. Several towns have had similar articles put before that, you know, municipal committees and boards begins with these types of statements. They're, they're really just an acknowledgement that you're, that you're on, you know, the ancestral ties to the lands and all, all that has been lost to, by, from Native Americans. It really doesn't carry bearing further than that. You know, and, and some of the language is more elaborate than others, but it really is no reference. It kind of is just a feel-good thing. So we're getting calls on these things, types of things, all over. I, I, in my opinion, would be good, because Mashpee, with its unique history and ties to the tribe, that it would set a good example for other towns to just bring an awareness to the presence of tribal, tribes within the region historically. So that would be my response.
Okay, no.
David, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I just, you know, had that one-on-one conversation with Cedric, where he said it might take you back to court and challenge the validity of the IGA. And I just would like to just, I hope, I have no reason to believe that that's current policy, so.
Nope, that's fair.
That's the case, I got, you got my vote to support this. I just want to hear, have the conversation.
That's good. Okay, so we'll put that one on hold. Okay, so then we'll put that one on hold. Okay. To see if the town will vote to instruct the select board to address immediately the growing burden of or on its property tax increases on the town's low and moderate income property owners. This action should be completed in ample time in order to report the subsidiary prior to the next public hearing on the town's tax classification. Valuation of homes in town have risen immensely in recent years. Those increases have turned, brought about large increases in property taxes. The town's last financially important property owners are feeling the financial squeeze. Are towns facing the same problem? We found a variety of solutions. Mashpee Select Board should set to work immediately to find a solution to this problem.
I think the track we're on to do a residential exemption, or at least to have the question answered.
Answered, yes.
Addresses the intent behind the article. So, I, you know.
I know, we already, we already have it in motion.
Motion.
Right.
So, I, we'll put it on hold for now.
Yeah, I don't know if we-
It's on unless it's withdrawn, but I think we're headed-
We're already there, yeah. Okay. Our next article, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Mashpee general bylaws, Chapter 127, Subsection 127 dot 2, Subsection 127 dot 3, Subsection 127 dot 4, Subsection 127 dot 5, by striking the said sections in their entirety or take any other action related thereto. This petition was revert, is reversing the implementing ban on the sale of single-use water bottles throughout the town of Mashpee.
Make a motion we oppose.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor to oppose?
Aye. No.
David?
You're, you're taking a vote on this?
Well, we show, we show it is a petition, but we do, whether we're supporting or not supporting it.
My motion would oppose its passage, which would leave the plastic water bottle in effect.
To leave them.
Right, and that's my goal.
Okay.
So, I oppose.
I also oppose. It's three to two. To see if the town will vote to establish a 10% limit on the amount of which the town of Mashpee, the town, can increase residential real estate tax in a single tax year as compared to real estate tax in the prior year, or on any property owned directly or indirectly by one or more individuals aged 65 or older. The 10% annual limit would suspend or any tax year which would, new permitted construction has been completed. Upon approval, this 10% annual limit will be in effect starting in 2023 tax year, using the 2022 tax year as a basis for which to measure the 10% maximum increase. Once the town determines at least one owner of a particular parcel or residential real estate is eligible for the 10% annual limit, this limit shall continue to apply until the property is sold or otherwise transferred until the death of the eligible owner, whichever occurs sooner, or take any other action related thereto. A dramatic increase in the sale prices have pushed residential real estate tax assessments in Mashpee to record levels. Many valuable senior citizens have, vulnerable senior citizens have been subject to devastating real estate tax increase of 20 to 50%. A 10% annual tax cap protects these seniors and allows them to stay in their homes.
I make a motion we oppose this, and my reasons are, I think the previous petition article where we're going on the residential exemption is a more equitable and targeted way to provide tax relief to year-round residents. This has huge unintended consequences, and I'll give you a specific example. Coastal property values are going up rapidly. It's no secret, Kraft family, senior citizens at 65, own property on Pappanus Island. This would limit their tax bill to a 10% increase and redistribute the Kraft's tax bill back to everybody else in town.
Right.
Is that really what you want to accomplish?
Is it really, is it owned by an individual or a trust?
Doesn't matter. Well, the, the example applies. You've got plenty of people who own a very expensive coastal property who are over 65, have no problem paying the taxes on it.
I get it.
And they shouldn't benefit, they shouldn't transfer their tax burden to people whose property values have not benefited from that, that appreciation who live not near the coast. So, this, I applaud the idea. I don't think it's a good way to do it.
And unfortunately, I, I'm not, I'm abstaining on this one because it did happen to me. I, I live on the water and my taxes jumped up.
So, your motion-
My motion is to oppose this passage of this petition.
So, I move on.
I, I have to agree with Andy only because, you know, I think the timing of this is off. I think if it was done after we implement the, the other component, then, you know, I'd be amicable to that.
Right.
You know, but doing it now, I think ties our hands and, I mean, as, as well as it's intended.
And they, they-
I couldn't, I don't think I'd support it.
No, I don't know what the right answer is, but I, you know, and I was opposed in the, in the past, we, we went against this, that the seasonal loans versus year-round is. It's time, something has to happen. It's, it's getting too difficult here for too many residents, too many seniors, too many families. Tax rates going sky-high. We, we need to somehow get a handle on it and help families and make it, slow the pace down.
I mean, I agree with Tom. You know, a lot of what we hear about is working families, people with kids-
Right.
-who can't handle-
And that want to live here.
And, and something that only addresses the needs of people 65 and older, whether they're income limited or not, misses the point. It actually, and it makes it worse for the people that we're trying to target.
It's just a flawed article. I mean, if you, if you change the verbiage, but we can't do that.
No, not under petition.
We have to take it the way it's read.
I get it.
The way it's written, so.
I'm just making a point, and I, that's how I feel.
I know. It's, this year was the biggest hit of all.
We need to do something, maybe this isn't the year. I don't know.
So, there was-
Motion to oppose.
To oppose.
And I already, oh, no, I did a second, so.
Okay. So, all in favor of opposing?
Yes.
Yes.
So, it's four to four, because I abstained.
Four to nothing, and one abstention.
Four to, yeah. Thank you.
Past your bedtime.
It is, I'm tired. To see if the town will vote, I mean, we're doing this all in one night. To see if the town will vote to amend section, subsection 174-3 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw, terms defined as follows. I'm not going to read. It's a solar article, I'm just going to read the explanation.
We've seen five of these.
This person will come in at the next meeting.
They wanted to come in at the next meeting.
Okay.
Providing you're okay with that to explain what-
Yes, I am. Exactly.
Okay, so can we hold all these?
This was, this was one that was on last time that we called.
Yeah.
Now, there were five from them and one from the other, you saw this. So, which is the one that's not?
I don't know which one I can find out.
All right, can we?
Isn't the planning board taking, have some-
Mary, do you know?
The very, very last one that is from Lynn Harvey just happens to be on the board right now.
Okay.
Okay, so it's the last one.
So, where we-
So, it's on page 39?
Page 39.
Article would amend the zoning bylaw to require that any solar energy system development of seven acres or more provide open space, one half acre open space per one acre developed, as well as setbacks from water bodies, 300 feet, and wetlands, 100 feet, in order to preserve the town's environment.
I like this one.
Hmm?
I like this one. I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Now, would this not let the other one go forward?
I don't know. Not my problem.
Has anybody else chimed in on this, this conservation or planning board?
Go and planning. I mean, what this does is it sets, you know, a half acre for every acre developed set aside. So, if you've got a 10-acre parcel, let me figure out, do the math. If you had, if you had, let's say you had a 14-acre parcel that was going to be solar farm, you'd need to have seven acre, three and a half acres of set aside of open space for the, what's developed.
So, they could use-
I think my math's right, I'm not sure, I'm tired.
So, nine acres would be a solar farm and-
Yeah, basically the same. For every acre you develop, you have to set aside a half acre as a buffer natural state, so you don't have it going to the property boundary as allowed potentially by the articles.
But now, this is, this is a petition article.
A petition article.
It's not something that is-
So, does, but I'm wondering, does this have major effects on the last four solar?
Probably.
Sure.
Do you want to hold it?
I would like, I would prefer to hold it only to see, get all the facts, as much as we can.
All important.
All relates to solar.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion, but I'm telling you, I support it.
I like the idea of it.
Yeah, I do.
I'm not against it. I would be curious to see what the feedback is.
Exactly.
Especially, that's probably planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe there's conservation involved. I don't know.
Okay. We did pretty good.
Yeah, very well.
You did very good.
We're holding it until we get all the other zoning articles in.
We're going to have them all explained to us at once.
We're going to get them all explained to us at once. We like it, but we just want all the information together. Discussion, okay, so we did the interapproval of adding articles, discussion and approval of adding articles to the May 2 annual town meeting warrants. So, when is our, when do we cut off our, any articles? We don't have any other articles coming forward?
These, these articles came before the close.
Okay.
And I'm just now wondering if you're, would like to add these to the agenda because they were not part of the original.
So, there's one, let me here, one, two, three projects that are eligible for federal funding.
This is the one we talked about this morning.
Right. The amount of 75% from the Natural Resources Conservation Services Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project.
Okay.
The town has to come up with a 25% match.
Okay.
So, this article, if we choose to include it, would allow us to qualify for 75% funding for the improvement, the Johns Pond spillway and fish ladder.
Oh, and the culvert.
Yeah.
Red Brook Road.
The Mashpee, the Mashpee Pond herring and the culvert at Red Brook Road.
Yeah.
So, we'd be crazy not to do these. I'd make a motion to include the funding for priority restoration projects and support them.
And support them.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 The other one is?
Mill Foil and Santuit and Johns Pond.
Okay.
So, these look to, we've got invasive pond weed and Johns and Santuit ponds, and so this would provide the money needed to have those treated.
And it's 35,000.
To remove those. If you don't remove them, they're going to take over the pond.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to include-
Add it.
-funding for treatment and eradication of invasive Mill Foil, Johns and Santuit pond to recommend it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.